On July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, I will take a motion.
I like that motion.
Second. Motion second to adopt minutes, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, presented. Any discussion? All those in favor can take my saying aye.
Aye.
All those like aye. Also, the minutes of the work session of July sixteenth, I'll take a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to adopt is presented. Any discussion? All those in favor can take my saying aye.
Aye.
All those like aye. Motion carried. Uh, on to appointments. The first one, uh, Mr. Frick, uh, is, uh, Austin Tino.
Uh, next, uh, please, please.
Okay. Mr. Gillen.
I'll go reappoint Chris Lovell.
Okay, this is to the board of zoning deals.
Yes, sir.
There's a motion, the second, we'll reappoint Chris Lovell. Board of zoning deals, any discussion? All those in favor can take my saying aye.
Aye.
All those like aye. The next is, uh, Mr. Schell.
Just how much we're going to say, Hensley, to the board of zoning deals.
Second.
Motion second, we appoint, uh, reappoint Sally Hensley to the board of zoning deals. Any discussion? All those in favor can take my saying aye.
Aye.
All those like aye. Motion carried, thank you. The next two, I believe, we're going to focus on the next agenda, Mr. Jennings. Is that, is that Brad?
That's Brad.
All right. Mr. Frick, uh, keep them here.
Uh, next agenda as well.
And then, Mr. Bowes, uh, tree commission.
Yes, Jason Lucas, please.
Second.
Motion second. Jason, is that it, Mason?
Lucas.
Yeah. Thank you. Motion second, we appoint Jason Lucas to replace your old Roberts on the tree commission. Any discussion? All those in favor can take my saying aye.
Aye.
All those like aye. Motion carried. Uh, youth activities commission, Mr. Frick.
Next, please.
All right. I'm here. Mr. Schell, on to the next, operation city manager, Mr. Phillips.
I have a little quick, one quick favor regarding the Austin Tino commission. Obviously, we were at sixteen, of course, later, unfortunately, with the passing of Ms. Jepsen. Uh, we are in the process of, uh, reaching out to them to identify date opportunities. We are planning to hold that initial kickoff meeting hopefully into this month, early next month. Uh, so if you find someone, maybe they can learn from that, or, but I do think it's necessary that we get them started, uh, to tell them that everyone has a problem.
Yes, sir. I have, I've identified somebody. They would like the attention to see if they have the time and they will do that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I don't have anything today. Under new business, uh, the first item is a public hearing. This is an application for alcohol beverage licenses, Mark and Jake. Uh, I'm Chan, Newman Crossing Bypass, the reason is a new owner. And I'm a little bit of public hearing on this application, alcohol beverage licenses this time. And I ask if anyone is here from the Art and Jakes. Thank you for being here today. Uh, now, is anyone who'd like to come forward and speak to the issue of this alcohol license? This is a public hearing. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Everything's in order. I'll ask for a motion of issues.
So moved, second.
Motion second, we approve the application for Art and Jakes, um, at Five Ten, Newman Crossing Bypass. Any discussion? All those in favor can take my saying aye.
Aye.
All those like aye. Motion carried, thank you. The next is also a public hearing on application of alcohol beverage licenses. This is Newell's Grocery located in forty-five Robinson Street, Suite A. The reason for this is the same as the previous, is a new owner. This is a public hearing on this issue, and I'd like to know that there is a representative here today from Newell's Grocery. You're here from Newell's Grocery. Thank you for being here today. We appreciate that. And this is the public's opportunity to come forward and speak to this issue. Is there anyone who would like to come forward? If you'll come forward, state your name, for the record.
My name is Tina. I would come out of here.
Okay.
I think that I got so loud. But my name is Tina, now, so most of you people know me. I live right up in the middle, um, Newell's Grocery. And I don't know whether they're trying to get, uh, a little store there, or they just want to keep it the same.
Keep it the same. There's no, this is not, this is not a package store location.
Right, absolutely. And it shouldn't be a location where they sell, uh, beer and wine and ice, you know, because there's, uh, this is our old, old neighborhood, with older people living in that neighborhood. My mom's eighty-nine. And I, um, I've been there a long time in, out, in, out, but I, you know, I like to keep, and I call chief in a minute. You know, people walk up and down the street with their beer, drinking their beer, wine, whatever they purchased at. And this is my neighborhood. I don't know how people feel about their neighborhood, but I would rather for it to be peaceful, quiet, you know, where we can live, we can sit on our porch, and we can, you know, all come together as a community. I, I don't like the idea of, um, um, licensed beer and wine in, uh, closed neighborhood. And if y'all could reconsider it, I would appreciate it. If you can't, if anything, go down, just know I'm there.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sylvia Hayes. And my mother and my father lived on that same street. At one time, that was very, very quiet there. So when they brought here, it got a little rough. And from me reading it, it says package on there. That's what brought us on the, um, and if the new owner, uh, doesn't have a license, they're selling it now. So how, how they selling beer? And why now? Is they don't have a license.
They, they do have a license.
They, they do have one now. They're trying to move.
Yes, ma'am, because there is a new owner. And the reason it says, uh, package in, in, uh, our orders, if you either have a package, the determination of package, which allows you to sell it in a can or a bottle, put it in a bag, and someone walk off with it, or a pouring license, which allows someone to pour a drink on the premise. And, uh, the distinction is, of course, obvious, uh, and this is package.
Well, I thank you for, um, hearing it up for me.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I've been to meetings when they just let us talk, and nobody asks a question. I thank you.
Answer questions. Now we're asking questions. We'll answer them. So I would ask Mr. Phillips, or even Chief, if we've had any issues. No, okay. And for the record, the Chief's act is that we've not had any issues, got a rule. Is that correct?
That's right.
All right. Thank you. Uh, any other questions regarding, any other comments from the public regarding this alcohol license, on the change of ownership of this alcohol license?
I know. Um, just for the sake of the public who's come up to, to express their opposition to getting, uh, licenses and owner, is, when there are issues, what should they do? So that they can properly report all the issues that's coming out? Because they're saying there are issues, our police don't know about it, so there's a disconnect. So I want to make sure that they're connected, if they do have issues.
Chief, would you like to address that question?
So to clarify, we've not had any issues in the store, from the store, regards to the sales and so forth, what's going on. If there are any issues outside of that, then in the neighborhood, they'll reach out, call us. We'll respond with the investigation we need to make sure we address any of those situations. In any way.
So you just need to call if there's an issue. Don't be afraid to do so. The chief can give you the, come after our needs, and he'll give you the right owner if you don't have to.
Thank you. And thank you for hearing that. Okay, if there's no one else who wants to come forward to speak to this issue, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion on the high.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, we approve the alcohol beverage licenses presented. Any discussion? All those in favor can take my saying aye.
Aye.
All those like aye. Motion carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing. This is the first of three to be held on the twenty twenty-four minutes rate. I'm going to call on Mr. Phillips in just a second to give that presentation. But I would like to set a few guidelines before we get started. Uh, if you are here today to comment on the city of Newton, I'm going to repeat that, city of Newton, uh, proposed millerage, this is your opportunity to do that. If you're here to comment on the board of education's membership rate, or you're here to comment on the county commissioner's millerage rate, or you're here to talk about the assessed value of your property, then bluntly, you're in the wrong meeting. Uh, those other people should be addressed for those issues. The board of education, uh, is the first, the county commissioners is the second, and the, uh, county board of assessors is, uh, in the third, if you want to talk about assessing value of your property. Here's why. The city of Newton does not, uh, assess property values. We provide, we are dependent on county, county tax assessor to do his job, her job, and provide us with that information. And we use that assessed value to, uh, to use against our millerage to create the, uh, the final tax bill. The other thing is that if you're here to comment on this today, and you're a citizen of the city of Newton, a property taxpayer in the city of Newton, then you will have an opportunity to do that. We are not going to limit the total amount of time that, uh, that the people who are here today, who have taken the time out of their day to come and speak to this issue. We're not going to, so if you're here, you gotta get to speak. Now, we are going to limit comments from each individual to two minutes. Mr. Frick was going to keep that clock for us. If there are questions during, from a, from a speaker, during that two-minute period, then the clock will stop while we attempt to answer your question. So, uh, you'll have your full two minutes to make a comment, and any questions or answers won't count against that two minutes. So, uh, we'll get started. Mr. Phillips will, uh, will have his presentation, and then, uh, council will have an opportunity to ask questions during that presentation of those questions. A lot of your questions might get answered. So, yeah, listen up for the presentation and the questions. Um, and Mr. Phillips, if you'll go ahead and get started.
Mayor, I've been just informed that we have a technical difficulty, that we have no audio for our viewers at home. The team is trying to work on the audio at this point in time. Obviously, it doesn't affect the people who've made, you know, the effort to be here today. Uh, I don't know if, if you want to.
I am, I am going to do that.
It's, you know, we, give them time to try to get it fixed and come back to the hearing in a minute.
I don't, I don't want, I don't want, and I hope everybody here understands my concern that the people who have.
I'm waiting for my thumbs up back here, is what I'm waiting on.
Who have, uh, gotten on, uh, on our website, or, or they're doing it, will be able to hear what we're saying in their houses. So what we're going to do is move on to the other items on the agenda. I've not opened the public hearing yet on this item, so we'll come back to this.
I'll, I'll be out for that when they're coming around.
Right, we, we come back. So the next item on the agenda is item L. Uh, this is establishing a retirement plan committee for four one A and four fifty-seven B plans. I think Ms. Kelsey has listed that.
Yes, sir, I do. Good afternoon, council. So attached to your agenda materials, you'll find a resolution that creates this new committee that is entitled the Retirement Plan Committee. As you're aware, we have a pension committee for defined benefit plans. This would be an additional committee. Uh, the focus of this group will be to provide administrative oversight for the four one A plan that was adopted and implemented in January of this year, and also our four fifty-seven plan. Uh, staff recommends approval of this resolution, and it's attached bylaws of the committee. Um, we also have a membership of five members, uh, as established by the bylaws, and city manager Phillips would recommend appointments of Ray Norton, Meg Kelsey, Megan Shay, Brent Lincolnship, and Damian Ross to this, um, committee. So I guess if you want to approve the resolution and those, uh, appointments at the same time, you can do that, or if you want to take those separately, mayor, whatever, it's your pleasure.
I'd like to go ahead and have separate, uh, if the council approves this, of course, separate motions to approve the resolutions and the bylaws together, and then a separate motion to, uh, to establish the committee, uh, by recommendation of the city manager. So first of all, though, uh, questions from council, if you're ready.
Quick question is, is this two separate committees, or is this one joint committee?
This is actually two separate committees, um, but three of the members that are on the pension committee also refer, are represented here as committee, um, appointments that city manager Phillips had recommended. So, um, most of the time, we will meet together, um, because a lot of times these issues kind of blend together, and so we'll be working as a team, um, to address them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I understand the motion on the first item, which would be to adopt the resolution with the bylaws.
So moved.
Second. Motion second to adopt the resolution with the bylaws. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor can take my saying aye.
Aye.
All those like aye. The next, uh, motion would be then to appoint the, uh, committees that are recommended by the city manager.
Motion, please.
Second.
Motion second, we approve the appointment of the committees that are recommended by city manager. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor can take my saying aye.
Aye.
All those like aye. Uh, the next item is a request to close, um, West Palm Street on September the seventh.
Mr. Mayor, we need to confirm, uh, uh, Mr. Phillips' recommendations for the ward as well at this point.
Absolutely. Those in part. Right. We just, I hope they said a lot for something. Yeah.
Well, those are the bylaws, I'm sorry.
Time's up. This is the, uh, I'm just going to.
Okay.
Five, five. Uh, request to close West Palm Street on September the seventh, twenty twenty-four, for a tour of all housing.
How are you doing, mayor? I'm doing great, mayor, council. I'm glad to be back for you again. Um, so this is just a request to close West Palm Street between Westport Square and Round Street, between the party library and the D-Mon Health Facility, uh, to host a housing resource fair, where we invite providers to come in and share their resources and programs that they have available to citizens of the city, um, and just educate them about what's available to them, what they can call about.
Right, is there a motion, good move?
So moved.
Motion second, approved request, any discussion? All those in favor can take my saying aye.
Aye.
All those like aye. Spanish two, uh, consideration of design build contract, you will for additional qualifications. Ms. Kelsey?
Uh, yes, sir. So over the last several months, the city has been in the process of doing an R and Q, a request for qualifications for the design build services for the construction of six additional pickleball courts at Hawk. These courts in design will be paid by SPOSS funding, so we'll be using design money from the current SPOSS, and then we'll be building the courts with the new SPOSS that will start in January. Um, CPS, our consultant and staff recommend the mayor council approve contract with Headley Construction. Uh, design costs submitted are a little over a hundred thousand dollars with a ten thousand dollar pre-construction fee. Uh, just so you're aware, after we complete the design, we'll bring that design back, um, and get the full cost of what that, um, project will cost, and then we'll move through that process to agree it out. So at this point, we're just, um, recommending approval of this contract. Go ahead and get the design underway.
Any questions, Ms. Kelsey?
I'm happy for you. We approve.
So, there's a motion second, and I do have a question. Uh, the, uh, design, getting into the weeds here, the design of these pickleball courts, specification-wise, is the same as the original pickleball court?
That is our plan, yes, sir. Headley, actually, um, was the contractor when the Hawk was built. So you're very familiar with that, and using the same team that they have before, so we're, we want everything to look, we feel the same. We just want to expand.
Right, those court specifications are very important to the, uh, pickleball court, the quality of court, and we want to make sure we replicate that.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. The motion is second. Discussion, other questions? All those in favor can take my saying aye.
Aye.
Here, thank you. Uh, okay. The next is, uh, Mr. Phillips on council resolution on charter amendment and co-awards is a venue pending to adoption of the ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. Uh, obviously, this is not in front of you for adoption today. This is in front of you for direction. If this body decides to go forward with potential charter amendment, there'll have to be a series of advertisements, uh, two advertisements and then two meetings in which, uh, to do with charter amendment. But what is in front of you today is, uh, is a proposal that would, uh, the second reading requirement of ordinance options. As you currently know now, on first reading of an ordinance, it must pass seven votes, or it goes to a second reading. Even if there's a member absent, and it approves second reading zero, it still must come back, uh, for a second reading. What the proposal says is that if an ordinance is duly published on an agenda, therefore there will be no off-agenda ordinance consideration, that an ordinance can pass upon fourth, uh, first reading with four, a hundred votes from this body. So before we move forward with any potential advertising or consideration, we wanted to have discussion and direction.
You want?
We're going to decide that.
No, 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 Simon. He's wanting direction from us.
I mean, I think it's a good idea from the standpoint, sometimes this might go change. That's just one thing I think about is to leave it almost a bit, to be unanimous. If somebody taps it, and it's still unanimous, whether it's four, six, that passes. That's what I was, that's what I think will be clearly easy, because that person is absolutely like it tuned in, and then we'll be, we'll be. So I think that's one thing to think about, is just, is a hundred percent, two, three, four, six, seven people that are not voting, that's, that's the only reading we need. If somebody, uh, steps against it, I would really want to remove it.
My question was, um, my question was, um, I guess I wanted to know what precipitated this in the first place, this discussion? Because I kind of understand in current ordinance that, you know, this was an opportunity to make sure that we're going to change, you know, an ordinance, may create an ordinance, change the ordinance, whatever, that, you know, there's proper, vague, by all parties involved, let's have a vote, let's think about it, and come back and vote again. Um, that way, we kind of make sure we're doing what we want to do, and not just that thing. But I get it that there may be some business filled up in some ways. So I guess I just wanted to find out what precipitated this in the first place. And then the other is that if there is, um, an appetite from council to change that process, when we look at it a little more nuanced? And because some things are, some ordinances are determined, council, that, um, um, city manager used with codified, which are things that apply to multiple people as they come through. But then there's some things like we created an ordinance to adopt, uh, for, um, to add something into our, um, city limits, or to change a zoning, or something like that. So the things that are codified, I wouldn't want us to think about that, um, for a little bit, and, and be able to allow that discussion. Um, and the things that are maybe, um, you know, one-time actions have a different treatment. So I'm bringing all of that up for discussion.
I don't have a problem with having that discussion, and, uh, Mr. Gillen, you had a.
Let me show, I'm, I'm clear. You really want us to go from the seven of unanimous and have direction as would we be okay with four, three? That, what I'm trying to sum up, and keep it real simple for myself.
Oh, just seeking direction from, from, from this body, because I do think, as you said, there are times that it impacts business. As a matter of fact, there's a certain reason on the day for agenda that are on there because it had, uh, an absentee council member to previously. So there are times where it impacts business, uh, but on a valid points, we're just here to solicit your direction.
Well, if I'm going to weigh in on it, then I guess direction I would give would to adjust it to where it could be a four, three, and not have to be a seven. That makes sense? That's your, that's the direction you need? That's my, that's my opinion.
You got two, oh, two, oh, you're saying yes, but I'm not necessarily there yet. And I'm going to, Mr. Schell.
Right, so it is almost routine, thanks, if somebody's not here, it's four, six, but it doesn't matter to me, that's just the new language, just go right here. My thinking, I don't know how you separate the routine business with the serious business I think is talking about. I make choices, I think, I think some of that's so routine, it's no use in us having a second vote. I don't know how you separate that.
I think the difference is the things that are, that will apply to future, um, applicants. So for instance, if we're creating, uh, we're reviewing the, you know, ordinance or whatever, and we're thinking, uh, this is, and, or something in there, um, that will apply to multiple people that have come before us, because now it's hard, and they have to look up to, they may not think about that a little bit.
Well, and what you're talking about, when we, when we had those situations before as a public hearing.
Yeah.
Um, and that's part of the confusion on the second final reading, uh, of these things is that the second final reading is not all for a public hearing. And the, the public doesn't understand, in a lot of cases, that they're not going to have the opportunity to come back and again, state their opinion about it in a second reading, because first time they had a public hearing, so they'll have another public hearing. And that's just not the case. We don't do it that way. It, it creates not only a delay in getting that line from the business, uh, community, but it also creates a perspective from our citizens that we should have done something when it wasn't what we do. I mean, we, we don't have a second, it's not a second public hearing. But I understand all of the conversation around this, and I don't, and we're not here today to, uh, to decide anything. And I think what we need to do, if, if I'm hearing, we have different opinions, so let's get, uh, staff to give us, bring back to us different scenarios in writing. So we'll know, you know, what, and it may be that we have another discussion about this, and take those different scenarios, and maybe merge the first one and the fourth one.
The exception of, I'm a standard move in this second.
That's right. So it's like you said, do a deep dive into the nuance of it, and then bring it back to us, so we can figure out what that looks like.
Mayor, one question. On the second reading, how many votes were needed for it to pass?
Four.
So we're not reducing or increasing the number of votes to ultimately pass the ordinance? With this, Joe?
Right. End it with years and years ago, whenever, Mr. Sears. Can you give us some background?
Just real quick.
And tell us why this is in my.
Yeah, this is, as far as ours is concerned, it goes back to pretty nineteen sixty. All right. At that time, the city was a strong way of form of government, and the way the capital had it set up was that so that an ordinance couldn't be introduced, um, and acted on for the very reasons that you're talking about. Keep in mind, they didn't publish agendas, so, and there was no requirement that it be published in an agenda, it could just show up at the meeting. All right, so when the city did change the city manager form of government, that was carried forward. All right, in nineteen eighty-seven, when we redid the charter, we carried it forward again. All right, so it is, uh, you have to think of the concept of the, the first reading and the second reading. You're the only people who have a first reading where that's in a charter that actually puts the first up. The first time generally is when it's just presented, and you only take one vote, and that's at the end of the time, and it doesn't matter. I mean, the vote can be for three, five, two, five, six, there's no additional reading. And so this is why generally, from a legal standpoint, it gives you some idea as to what the vote will be on the second reading, but you're the only people who actually take a vote on the first reading. Most of them, it's presented, and then they vote on it, and they have to read it. Right? Uh, those are generally the smaller municipalities which do that, simply because they jump out of the staff, and things show up, and they really want to see something dividing before they do it, and they want to consider it. That's usually when it comes up. Some of your other cities right around you, it's just, it appears on the agenda, and they vote on it. So this is what the amendment did, was eliminate this concept of a first reading. So to the extent that the first reading just means that you're not, if it doesn't pass, then it just means you don't wait two weeks later to vote on it again. Now, as Ms. Jenkins said, uh, there are certain actions that are taken that don't require, you know, of one vote. And for that, bond resolutions, if you issue a bond resolution under the bond statute that supersedes the city's charter, you only have to take one vote. It, it doesn't matter if it's four, three, or what it is, but I mean, it's that. So what we did, because of this requirement, and we unfortunately went through a series of time when we had to fake that season, uh, because of death, we did change it, so as Mr. Schell. because of death, we did change it, as Mr. Shell says, where if there is a, quote, vacancy, and it is on the first reading and it's six of, then it does pass without the, say, reading. So as Mr. Yell said, that can be, you know, arranged that way, uh, but to the extent that the purpose of the first reading, if someone has an absence as opposed to vacancy, I mean, that kind of changes the dynamic, you know, of where's that person could have voted if they'd been here. But they, for whatever reason, they did, they were ill, they couldn't be here, as opposed to being, you know, having resigned, created a vacancy or passed away, being created a vacancy. So we can take a look at that and come back to y'all with, with any number of things you want to do. Um, I just want to caution just from a, uh, a operational standpoint, if you start saying zoning managers take four, three, or, or, you know, unanimous on four, three, we'll carry it over, pension things take the fourth, this is why we're here today, pension vote. It was under a deadline that we couldn't have a full council at that point. So, you know, I just caution you on creating these pigeon holes of what votes take. As the mayor said, people get confused sometimes, that, you know, could create some confusion. But we'll be glad to take a look, track it up, let you know what other people are doing, and y'all make the decision, which maybe just leave it like this.
Yes, I said, sure, Brad's explanation showed me why I kind of grabbed what you're saying. First reading and that vote, and that goes, I mean, I, after you explained, like, I kind of thought it was under the cover of darkness where people just did something, got somebody's knowledge, had a meeting, and that word, they wouldn't need vote, I, and they they couldn't change somebody's vote, but more I think about it, actually talk about that, where they just say one reading, it is four, three, or seven, oh, it's true.
Okay, I would tend to agree that it definitely makes sense more efficient.
Yeah, it's true.
Now, and I, Mike, as you mentioned, like, my other, my question was, you know, does that reduce the transparency in government and in, in the city government? And I don't think it does, in fact, before, we had all of the, the meetings of, meetings, agendas, and all this, so there, there are a lot of things.
Okay, well, staff has our direction, there's no reason I don't make our motion, nobody invited to put a motion together, capture what we're talking about. But you have our construction, you'll run it back to us for our consideration, that'd be great. Uh, the next item on the agenda is consideration of ordinance to amend, code of ordinances, chapter three, alcohol beverages, persons who are not entitled to a license insurance.
It is actually an ordinance, two of us are asking that for these votes. Uh, what we have in front of you, uh, is an ordinance removing some people who are not entitled to a, an alcohol license. For, for many years, the majority of municipalities in the state of Georgia did have a provision that did not allow a sitting city official or a city employee to have ownership or rights to a license. And that is still in our ordinance today. We had, we had an employee who owns a restaurant, and then he come inquire about a license, and we informed him that he could not have such. And speaking with Mr. Sears, Mr. Sears told me that there was a case where it was ruled that a city official could not be prohibited from holding a license. So what happened in most municipalities, since they said the city officials could hold one, they just said, city employees should be treated the same way to city officials, and most people have shrunk back from their ordinance. So that is why there's a front of you to that.
Questions, Mr. Phillips? Your motion.
My motion is second.
Motion is second, we approve the consideration of an ordinance to amend code of ordinances, chapter three, alcohol beverages, section three dash forty-nine, persons who are not entitled to a license, motion second, approve. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, ready to get my saying aye?
Aye.
Close like sign, motion here, thank you, Phil. Under unfinished business, uh, this first item is consideration of a resolution for the transmit of the twenty twenty-four update of the capital improvements element, which includes a short-term work program to the city's commission and the Georgia department. You told my area.
I'm fine, Mr. Redd, I'm just thankful that you're speaking so much. Um, so we're here to request transmit of the capital improvements element, short-term work program, to three rivers regional commission, once we get back to comments, we'll come back with forty-four adoption.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, uh, there's no, no need there, it's just construction of this call. The next item, Mr. Ramirez, uh, I believe you have the next, five Hamilton, Ohio Drive, request extension. I'm sorry.
We do need a local resolution, right?
I'm sorry. We do. Uh, is there a motion for a local resolution?
Oh, no, we're making a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussions? All those in favor, ready to get my saying aye? Close like sign, motion here, thank you. Five, Hamilton, Ohio Drive.
Mayor Councilmember, good afternoon. I'm here for this hearing, and she's asking for an extension to the House. She's asking whether between thirty to forty-five days, extension. Her ninety days is up on August twenty-sixth, I don't know the time you guys track her, we'll start on the twenty-second.
Right, any questions?
Um, do you have a contract or a rating to do the work, if that lasts just thirty days?
I had called several, and they, they returned to hall, near hall one, they returned to call, they don't believe it. Then that's the day on hall one, they await them to return, and then another on the back, say they got, they do, and they got three to four weeks for they can, you know, you know, get it done.
Um. So.
I think that, I think I just, the question is, it's forty-five days, no? Today's rule, forty-five days is tomorrow?
So I was going to suggest sixty, just a little bit more time, a little bit more time, especially since we're hanging on to the, you know, the, 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 the.
I'm ready for a motion, but I'll pull it up.
Okay, then I'll make a motion for sixty, yes?
Second.
Motion is second, Grant. Michelle, you have a question? My motion is second, Grant, extension sixty days for forty, I'm sorry, five, Hamilton, Ohio Drive, any discussion?
I'm just going to ask the, the land, the landowner.
Yeah.
Is looking at property, is the building is secure and correct, so it's not definitely danger to anybody around?
No.
Okay. Is there? Okay, just for, just for the, the neighbors that look at it, would it possibly blow the yard?
No, we keep the yard, if somebody live there, we keep it here, like, the grass, so we keep it here, and that, you know.
Yeah, okay, I was just going to picture there, so.
Right, motion second, any other questions? All those in favor, ready to get my saying aye?
Aye.
Close like sign, motion here, thank you, for being here. The next is the second final reading of ordinance to amend twenty twenty-three, please be here, governor. So, move. Motion second, we ask of the local, uh, ordinance to amend twenty twenty-three, this will be your budgets, and second, not reading, any discussion? All those in favor, ready to get my saying aye?
Aye.
Close like sign, uh, here, thank you. The next is the second final reading, adoption of agreement, and general agreement of the Georgia Association for the City of Georgia's time limit retirement program, second final reading, so motion.
Move.
Okay, motion is second, we, uh, top is presented on second final reading, any discussion? All those in favor, ready to get my saying aye?
Aye.
Close like sign, motion here, thank you. That takes us to visitors, and we have Mr. Clay Neely with us today to discuss the fourth July fireworks, and I get an update on the hearing of our, oh, we don't. Mr. Neely, you need to talk, so.
Good evening, full of luck for you guys. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor Council, uh, just kind of, speaking on behalf of the New York Motor Club, and want to personally thank you for your partnership with our club this year in helping bring fireworks back to great stadium, we need high school. We had a great turnout, you know, the last few years, we had it over at the fairgrounds while construction was underway, and this year we were able to bring it back on site, schools reopening, it was a great event, and we appreciate your assistance on that. Uh, we appreciate having you come and be in there, and had a great turnout, and just wanted to personally say thank you, and personally appreciate your assistance.
We appreciate what the Royal Department does to put that on, I know it's a lot of work and hot outside.
It is hot outside.
We thank you.
That's all right.
Uh, I'm afraid that ends our regular agenda, and we're back to Mr. Phillips on the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be giving an update, unfortunately, AP six can't figure it out at this point in time, but the good thing is, we are recording okay on site. So what we can do, as soon as the meeting is over, we can upload it straight to social media.
Okay.
It's just not being broadcast live is the only issue that would happen. Certainly apologize for that, testing the only words, not certain what happened, but if you like that manner, we, we can proceed.
Well, this is our first of threes, and we had no choice but to proceed, and the people who were here will have their opportunity to speak, obviously. We, we appreciate your patience as we try to get that technical glitch fixed, like, uh, here we are. So, Mr. Phillips, as I said earlier, Mr. Phillips will start the presentation. Do the presentation, uh, I don't think he intends to go through the entire package that we have, it's just going to be a high-level presentation. Council has that opportunity to see this, so the members of council have that opportunity to discuss this with Mr. Phillips, and I know there'll be some questioning and suggestion, then it'll open it up for our citizens, Mr. Phillips?
Absolutely, again, apologize for the technical difficulties, Phil, I was at home, uh, we'll take everyone for attending today, citizens, servants, I hear your input. Uh, yeah, as, as a matter of fact, I do have a presentation, it's, I have a lot of slides in, I'm not going to go through all, all the slides. Uh, we do have, the presentation is, is available on our website at nun ga.gov, if you go to the new section. Uh, so it is available for a while, so if you're interested in viewing the entire, so that, you can do so. Uh, real quick, I want to start off, uh, this is hearing number one of three, and the process is determined by the taxpayer bill rights, which is a bill that has been applicable in the state of Georgia, as you can see there, since two thousand. Uh, so we're in our, our twenty-fourth year of using that, that same process. Uh, I also want to explain our milage rates, uh, we use the term all the time, and some people may not understand what a milage rate is, so I think it's very important to, to set some of the basics. A milage rate is basically, one mil is equal to a dollar for every one thousand dollars of assessed value. As the mayor said, as I've been commenting earlier, the assessed value is determined by the tax commissioner's office. That is applied to only forty percent, so if you have a house, uh, that is valued at four hundred thousand dollars, the mileage is only applied to forty percent, which is a hundred and sixty thousand of that. If we, if we, a local municipality desires to adopt any rate higher than the rollback rate, and I will explain what the rollback, uh, rollback rate is later, we must hold three hearings, advertise, and issue a press release, which we have done. Real quick, here we are on the first of three hearings, August thirteenth, today, two thirty. Our second hearing will be next Monday, August nineteenth, at eleven thirty, and the last hearing will be Monday, August nineteenth, at six thirty. After the conclusion of that hearing on the nineteenth, this body will consider an ordinance, ordinance to step a milage rate. Our deadline to get the certified, uh, PT forms back to the county is Wednesday. So therefore, we are on a, on a timeframe in which to, uh, return the confirmation back to the county, uh, county tax commissioner. I just want to jump right in, I think this is a question that most people are here for, are very interested in. Why? I think that's the, the question. And I do have a lot of data, a lot of slides that back up some of these, I'm not going to go through all of those, but real quick, number one, balance of budget. We are setting this milage rate not for next year's budget, which will be from January to December of twenty twenty-five. We are setting this milage rate for the budget that we are currently in, the twenty twenty-four budget. State law requires us to have a balanced budget. Uh, number two, and I'll explain later, this body has a, uh, history, a really good history, which I think you're proud of, of rolling back the milage rate. Uh, we have had a large loss of the commercial taxpayer from the digest, I think we saw that in the local paper, it was our cancer center who went from a for-profit to a nonprofit status. Uh, we lost approximately about eight hundred thousand dollars annually in the combination of, uh, property taxes and occupational tax from the cancer center's change. This body has made an investment over the past couple of years to invest, to recruit and retain our employees. Uh, I'm happy to report that's working. We were here last year, uh, asking for change to some of our pay packages for the police department, I think we had about fifteen vacancies at the time. As we sit here today in police department, we have one vacancy in the police department, we have zero vacancies in the fire department, and so that, that investment that you, are we zero? Hundred, hundred percent well saved, yeah, I'm sorry. So the investment certainly has paid off, and we have more parks on the streets, more patrolling. Uh, over the years, there's been, uh, increasing dependence on local option sales tax, it is the number one revenue source in our budget, not property taxes. We are seeing local option sales tax stabilize and decline, so therefore, that's, that's impacting our budget operation. Uh, obviously, inflationary expenses, I don't think I have to talk much about inflationary expenses, I think we all have been hit by it, been hit up. Our homes been hit here, uh, and our other businesses, uh, and also the service levels. Uh, we provide ourselves on, on service levels and quality of community, and unfortunately, that inflationary expenses, uh, those, those are more higher than they previously have been, so. I do have some stats I want to, I want to continue to back up some of this. First of all, balance the current twenty twenty-four budget. Um, the line item budget for property taxes was seven point four million dollars. If you apply the rollback milage rate, which is recommended at two point five nine five, you'll see we have about a one point two million dollar shortfall in that particular line item. Some people have asked me, why three point one two, where did it come from? Well, the three point one two that we advertised, as you can see, is the number needed to get us to that two, seven point four million dollar line item in our budget. I want to go back, those are small, and I don't expect you to read those, but when I stood in front of this body back in December and presented the twenty-four budget, there were a couple of things that I said, under my three-year budget highlights, I mentioned that a rollback milage rate will become more difficult to take each year. Council may want to consider a home set extension for potential tax relief for homeowners. We seen that house go five eighty-one. Uh, also in the budget challenges, I said estimating the necessary milage rate that has been typically grown on reassessed values is becoming difficult. So I presented that during, uh, the budget hearings, and prior to the council adopting the twenty-four budget that we're operating under. Here's something I think you should really be proud of, I know it's kind of complicated to see, but this is a history of where this body has set the milage rate. Eleven of the past thirteen years, you have adopted the rollback rate. The last time this body did not take a rollback rate was in twenty eighteen. So again, eleven of the thirteen years, we've gone from a four point three nine mil rate to a two point seven five mil rate. I'll be proud of that. Here's another question that I get asked a lot, and it's a legitimate question, you should be asking this question. Can we cut the budget? And I always say, yes, I'm not going to say we can't, never cut budgets. Uh, as a matter of fact, we've already asked that, I've asked staff, they look at the budgets, they look at some of their travel training budgets, they look at some of their non-virtu staff, or in other areas where they may be able to continue to reduce costs in this twenty-four budget year, before we start the budget process for next year. However, we are seven and a half months into our budget, that means we have seven and a half months of expenses. We're fully staffed, and when you're fully staffed, you don't create a lot of savings by having vacancies. Uh, we have had vacancies in the past, which makes some of the budgeting a little easier, and also, a lot of our annual contracts, uh, that we have, such as our auditing contracts, our communication contracts, or radios, et cetera, a lot, a lot of those are signed at the beginning of the year. So when we look to cut money to, to have an even budget this year, we're looking within side of this last four and a half months of expenditure. We'll note that the staffing represents seventy-eight percent of our general fund budget. Uh, staffing, that means employees and, and their benefits, so we are very heavy when it comes to, uh, there's more costs on the staffing side than it is the operational or the capital equipment side, as you can see, the capital equipment's only three percent of the budget, operating's nineteen percent. Uh, this is more complicated, I don't want anyone to get confused by the details, but I'm going to highlight a couple of quick things. This column here, the second column, called reassessment, that's what everyone has been upset about, is their escalating values on their house. When the assessor reassesses your property. When the assessor reassesses your property and your assessment goes up, the cumulative total of all properties in the city of Nunean is put into that particular column. So for this year, we have about $140, about $140 million worth of growth in that line item. The higher that number is, the higher the rollback rate. So there's a direct correlation between assessments and rollback. If you go back to this slide, you see how we've had a big decrease this last few years? Directly related to the home values or property values creating, thus creating a larger rollback. But there's something unique on this, on this form that I want to show you. And again, it relates back to, unfortunately, I'm not trying to be negative. I think the cancer center's been great for this community. I'd do it all over again. But normally, in this third column, you don't see negative red numbers. That's the growth column. That's the other adjustment column. Usually, we see anywhere between 30 to $60 million plus in that column. Well, this year, it's $60 million negative. That is very, very unusual. Equipment's in a little bit of a tough position to balance the budget. We have to publish a five-year digest in the paper per law. Uh, I want to show you a couple of things. I have included the rollback rate of 2.595 here. I don't know if you can see, but if you go download from, on the website, you can find it. The rollback is a negative tax levy for us. Uh, I don't know if I've ever been in a position in the 24 years that I've been here to see a negative tax levy, but it is certainly, certainly difficult. I also want to point out, the last five years, our average net levy increase has been $192,000 a year. That seems like a lot of money. That's certainly a lot of money for an individual, lots of money in the household. But when you relate it to a 30-plus million dollar budget, each of those annual levies has been less than 1% of our budget. For example, a 1% pay raise across the board inside the city of Nunean is $200,000, 1%. So the levies have been very small because of the rollback position that this body has taken the last five years. This, I just want to show you what 3.12 would, would do if this body elects to adopt that milage rate. And you may not. A levy increase of $1.14 million or 17%. Can you get that off for me a minute? Thank you. Uh, what is the impact? Uh, I ran some scenarios here. If this body were to adopt the 3.12 milage rate, if you look at the level of 350, $350,000 is close to the average house valuation inside the city of Nunean. At a $350,000 home, the annual difference it impacts with you would be $73.50. Basically, it's $21 for over $100,000 of assessed value. We'll do a couple of benchmarking. I'll show you some things and compare in milage rates. And then I'll turn it over to, back to question and answer in the public hearing. This is a really interesting chart. What this chart shows is every city and the county, Quitte County, and their combined milage rates. For example, Nunean is next to the last at the bottom. The little orange indicates Nunean's 3.12 proposed. The next column is Quitte County's advertised milage rate. The next column is the school system's advertised milage rate. And this, this chart does include advertised milage rates where each of these entities somehow adopted them somewhere still in their hearing. But if you look inside the city of Nunean, as advertised, the milage rate would be 24.72. That is a combined milage rate. If you just do a simple comparison, uh, Harrelson is 24.71 and Quitte County is 24.71 just right below us. So if you look inside Nunean or Quitte County, the rates are almost the same. And you may say, how do you do that? Because you don't pay city taxes if you live in the county. If you live in the county, you pay the fire tax and the fire bill. You know, some other comparable, you know, Sonoita's at 29, Grams at 29. So again, inside Quitte County, I think we have constantly held a very competitive milage rate here in the city of Nunean. All right, let's use that $350,000 home as an example. If you pass the 3.12 mils and the other entity passes advertised, I'm not saying the world, your combined tax bill would be $3,461. That's just no exemption. There may be people with exemptions, senior discounts at the school, et cetera, that would lower that. But this is non-invention. I just wanted to show you where your, your tax bill would go. 62% to the school system, 25% to Quitte County, 12.6% to the city of Nunean. The city of Nunean are these light blue and blue pie chart pieces. You can see 6.1%, 6.2% of your tax bill goes to Nunean Fire Department and Nunean Police Department. A little quick benchmarking. I've got a few more slides and I'm done. I took the opportunity to benchmark similar cities, not inside Quitte County. I benchmarked like Tishry City, uh, LaGrange, Carrollton, et cetera. And the blue column is the city milage rates. What I've done here is I've put the advertised rate for the city of Nunean. We're right here on the left-hand side. And for the other cities, I didn't have time to go through all the newspaper articles with different jurisdictions. So I went to the 2023 milage rates that I can get from the Department of Revenue, and I combined them. So there it is, the city, Nunean 3.12, and there's that 24.72 combined. So the combined is the combined rates that you would pay if you lived inside of these other cities. For example, if you live in Richmond, city of Richmond, your combined rate's 38. Uh, if you live in Carrollton, it's 28. If you live in College Park, it's 44. Nunean is 42% less than the city average milage rate, 5.35. And we're 22% less than the average combined milage rate if you live in those other cities. Last benchmarking. This is an interesting chart. The blue columns represent our general fund expenditures. What we spend for police and fire, parks and wrecks, general government, uh, main streets, leisure services, uh, Carnegie Library, uh, tangs owning, et cetera. And the little orange dot up there is the population of each of these entities. This develops what we call in our industry a per capita budget. What is each city spending per citizen for general fund services? City of Nunean is $826 per citizen. The average on that chart is 1,445. We're 43% less. I've always said that we do a lot, we're efficient. We continue to try to find efficiencies, and we will continue to do so. Uh, and sometimes, because of some of the other, uh, why questions, sometimes it gets hard to hold a milage rate. So then the questions, again, is, uh, this presentation and a lot of other slides behind it is available on our website, uh, nunga.gov.
Questions, council? Number one, go back to the slide if you don't mind. What is the impact of the tax increase for property owners in the city of Nunean? Is that true? Do we have to say that completely?
Maybe we should go back to that a little, please.
What is the impact of the tax increase to a property owner?
The little one we have, the three scenarios, the 250, the 350, and 450?
Uh, you had, uh, 2.59, the 3.12, and then annual difference. That's it. Okay, so just for clarification, so on you said 350,000. Yes, the 250, 350, the, the difference between the 259, which would be the rollback.
Correct.
We took that, versus what you're proposing, one of the proposals, the higher end, 312. Correct?
That's correct.
On the $350,000 house, is the difference of $73.50 on annual basis?
On annual basis, or the city of Nunean portion of the tax bill?
That's why, that's why we're here today.
That is correct.
I mean, you melded some other into your presentation, but we're here today talking about the city of Nunean and what that increase would cost a homeowner who had, um, and just the city of Nunean taxes.
That's correct.
So, okay. Any other questions?
So the number is $6 a month?
Yeah. That's exactly right. So I can get to the situation. From $6 a month. Any other questions?
I do have a question related to that slide where you are with 3, 250, 350, 450. Uh, just for, uh, when you have this information at, but what about the houses that are 550, 650, 750? Uh, do you have a, like a number that exceeds the 450, understanding that entry level typically in Nunean is 350, 350 and 4? Um, so, but for that reason, because that would generate a, a higher, the success.
The higher valuation, higher the number will be. That's why I put the 21,000, $41 per 100, got a $500,000 house. It'd be 5 times 21, a little $105. If it was a million-dollar house, it would be, uh, 21 times 10.
Yeah, so, you and I've had this conversation, but I'll have a question out here. Arriving at the 3.1, let's just say, for example, we decided not, not to take the rollback and take the 2.75. Um, and based upon, because I've got this question from, from a few people regarding our reserve fund. So for the sake, for, for the public to understand that if we took, stated the 2.75, there would be money that would have to be basically come out of the general fund in order to supplement that.
Because that would be my projection, yes, it is. 2.75 is probably required to use upon balance at the end of the year.
So the higher we go up the scale, uh, not, not reaching the 3.12, for example, if we listed, we marked it at, you know, 2.9 or even somewhere between 2.75 to 2.9 and decided that, you just give examples, the milage rate could be determined at any. So in other words, it could be 7.75, it could be, uh, excuse me, not 7.75, but 2.75, and it could be 2.85.
That is, that is right.
So there's nothing saying we have to follow those numbers.
This body, next Monday, after the third public hearing, can sub-milage rate anywhere from 0 to 3.12. I wouldn't recommend 0.
Okay, so, quick calculation on 650. 40% of that times the 259 is 67470. Uh, 650, 40% of that times the 3.12 is 811. The difference is 13650, over 655,000. Somebody check my math.
I'll take it at your word. Did you get your head or did I get it wrong?
650 times 45. So other questions, council? If there are any, I'm ready to enter into public comment.
That's it, that's it.
Okay. Uh, okay, so we, I've set the ground rules, uh, at the beginning. This is your opportunity to speak, to issue a proposed milage rate. You've seen the presentation, you've heard a couple of questions asked. Uh, this is your opportunity to come forward and put out your name and your address, please. Uh, I would appreciate it very much if the people who speak are actually property owners in the city of Nunean. You're the ones who affected by this. Uh, so if you come up, state your name and address. Mr. Kramer's going to keep the two-minute rule. If you've got a question, uh, we'll stop the clock. So, who's first? Yes, sir, come forward, please. Thank you. Early, Barry, 17th Drive Street, Drive of Nunean, Georgia. Thank you, thank you. I see that the labor was 78% relative to the other communities that you did the comparison on what is their relative comparison in terms of labor?
Excellent, excellent question, sir. Very good. 75 to 80, 80% is very technical on the governing issue. Where people, service industry, uh, look at Quitte County, given the Quitte County school board, I think they have presented very simple numbers, so yeah. This, that's not down the line. It's pretty difficult.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Next, please.
I'm here, uh, to speak on my father's behalf, who's a senior citizen. Um, the son, my brother. Shay Gattel, 11th Avenue Way, living in City Limits. So when we have a set budget, we do not have any other expenses. Um, our inflation is high because everything else is high, including power, water, utility, whatnot. We cannot expend or borrow. We don't have that flexibility. What do we do? We get restrained, right? We can't eat, things of that sort. What is the city of Nunean doing if they're restrained like we are?
Phillips, I think it's, the question may be, how are we taking our bill?
Oh, absolutely.
What are you cutting back?
Well, that's, I said, I have asked our staff, seven and a half months into this budget. Of course, when we start the 2025 budget process, which we haven't done yet, I'm certain this body's going to ask us to, to look at all the operational, operational efficiencies. I have asked our staff to look at our, our non-purchased capital. Look at our non, uh, there's some contracts we have with some, there's some special contracts that we started to fill off. We've asked them to look at some of the travel and training. Of course, we, there's so much minimum training, training to do, but we're looking at doing some of the training in-house. Uh, obviously overtime is something I, I, I've requested staff to minimize. But yes, we've got to do certain things to try to minimize costs. We're going to change that.
I just noticed, um, you know, it was approved for our committee. It looks like it's some of the same people on both of the committees. You know, is that something that can be reduced to one-person committee? Or is that eliminated to next year? So it can...
They don't get paid. They get paid around the salary. They don't get paid to be on the committee. There is no stipend to be on the committee. It's, it's part of their job. There's a salary in there.
So things of that sort, you know, all throughout, things that are unnecessary that can be extended into the next budget fiscal year, so you can be less extended yourselves, including us.
Thank you for your comment. I appreciate it.
Six dollars is a lot.
Yes, anyone else? Next speaker? Come on, I didn't finish my two minutes.
One more, you, you have time left.
Okay, you know.
Other than regards to the milage, so technically, it was not reduced. It was reduced relatively, increasing the sense of value of the homes, right?
Is it like, look, do you look at the difference in the appreciation of the homes?
You know, that is, that's always the question that's asked, you know, the, the milage rate is technically reduced. The tax bill that's created from that is, is a different matter. What you may owe is going to be dependent upon how much of an assessment value you did receive or you didn't want to receive. And everyone's going to have an individual different experience based upon how they're home. What we get is a rollback rate that is, that is recommended based upon the totality of all properties in the city being reassessed. Not an individual property that you nor I may own.
Right, so what happens when mills, five people down? Because you're looking at the relative value.
We have.
I look at the numbers.
That's right. We have had a situation in passing today. If you can go back to the chart that shows the milage rate history for me. My council has adopted one that, if you want that, if you want that list, right there. The black, uh, right there. It's very interesting, if you don't mind my pointing something. You see that? It's, it wasn't going to fall, was it? That very first year, that was an anomaly, because you asked the question, what happens when the valuations go down? We, in 2012, we were coming out of a recession, you know, overall, and property values did in fact go down. That particular year, the rollback rate was actually an increase. This body could have adopted a higher milage rate because of the decrease in home values at that time. But they chose not to. They, they kept it steady. So it does work both ways, but just unfortunately, past several years, we've been in the uptick of the market where the home valuations have certainly gone up and not, certainly not decreased. It does work both ways.
Okay, thank you. Next person.
Am I phrasing my question correctly? My name is Cheryl Massenberg, and I'm at the 17th Ontario Court.
Thank you.
The one question I noticed that you indicated with the loss from the cancer center has been a, a big minus on the, on the budget. With additional companies coming in and structures, are you looking to maybe some of that loss with them? I read an article recently that there's an expectation that we will get it out that month, will be. But, um, is, are we looking, or there's some consideration, so I noticed that there's a lot of homes going up? And are you looking for those entities to assist with that deficit?
All right, very good question, good answer. And I, I go back, when I showed you the digest, and there were three columns, and I showed you the column that had the negatives in it. Normally, that's positive, because normally that does reflect the new businesses and the new homes. It's just unfortunately this year, the Cancer Center's value was approximately one hundred million. They came off the books, and we did not have enough other new homes or new businesses to overcome that. But yes, normally, you would see a positive reflect exactly what you said. And also, you mentioned a little bit about a transfer of property, our responsibility to businesses. That's basically what a homestead exemption does. And whenever you go to the polls in November, you'll be voting for House Bill five eighty one, which is a homestead exemption, which does essentially start shifting the tax burden to non-homesteaded properties. And what I mean by non-homesteaded, it means properties that you don't live in. You're only a homesteaded property if you own it and live in. So apartments, rental homes, retail, industrial, those are all non-homesteaded properties. And for your information, about forty four percent of our tax digest is comprised of homesteaded properties.
You say a hundred million, do you mean a million?
One hundred million.
Our next person, please.
Good afternoon, I'm a citizen of seventy four Fox Ridge Drive, three zero two six five. I just came just to say that I'm just concerned about the amount of the percentage amount. I might not look like I'm seeing the citizens too. Good dreams, my mother. I'm just concerned because how do I live? You know, I I work another job, I'm retired from one place, and I'm working another job. And, um, and I understand that everybody needs to increase, I'm just concerned about the amount of the increase. You know, and I know that it's hard to take a rollback because other things suffer. But if you have an emergency fund, this is an emergency to me. So, you know, we need to do something, and I just felt like I would be remiss if I didn't say anything. So I just wanted to say I'm just concerned about the amount of the the percentage on the.
We appreciate that comment, and we understand the the folks in our community who are retired, you know, on fixed income. And we, that's the reason for the three meetings, is to get this input and understand where we are, and and there's some discussion among the council, whether it's the top of the rollback, can't be the wrong portion. But this may not be the three one two. So if we're working on some numbers here, that we can, that we can go back to. We'll, at the second and then on lead. So, uh, I'm in, yes, sir?
Hey, everybody, James Shepard, one twenty six Screamble Street, three edges is three. I had a couple of questions to start off with. Um, I was wondering if the city council is aware of, over the past decade, how much our population has increased?
Sure we are.
About thirty percent. Uh, and are you aware of, over that period, how much our expenditures and income, or the city expenditures and revenues have gone during that period? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Mr. Phillips?
Um, I I don't have a lot of data right in front of me, but you are correct. We're currently operating under about thirty seven million dollar general fund budget. I wish I had some of the budget numbers in front of me, but you're certainly correct. We were probably operating under twenty seven or twenty eight million dollar budget more than five or six years ago.
Uh, yeah, I think since twenty fourteen, it's gone up by about ninety six percent. Um, and then in that time, are you aware of how much house, housing costs have gone up in the city? Can you speak to that?
The value of the individual home in the city?
We are aware. We're acutely aware.
So about sixty five percent. Um, and what about average income in the county? Or in the city, sorry.
I don't have that.
It's about thirty nine percent. Um, are you aware of how much the expenditures and taxes have gone up on a per capita basis in the city over that same period of last decade?
Mr. Phillips, I think the number we're looking for here is the expenditure per capita.
Which was the eight hundred forty four dollars that I gave you for the potential year added. I've given you expenditure, per capita expenditure many times during the budget presentation for many years, and I would have, like, I have it in front of me, we're always one of the most, and I would argue that per capita expenditure hasn't changed much.
Uh, it's actually gone up about fifty percent. So the average income in this city has gone up, again, about forty percent. The average expenditures have gone up about fifty percent, and our population's gone up by thirty percent. Uh, so the point here is that this growth is outpacing our population growth. The expenditures and the revenues are being outpaced, are are going faster than our population growth, and is going up by significantly faster than our average income growth. Which is to say that over the last decade, it looks like the city has made its citizens poorer and has continued to develop its tax, uh, its tax system and the city itself in a way that makes its citizens poorer. So it advises all of you to consider that as you move forward, in this and all of your other procedures. Thank you.
I appreciate your comment. Anyone else? Yes, sir, you'll come forward, please.
This is just a quick question. I think you mentioned your reserved, reserve account. So asking, when you look at possibility, and this seems pretty clear, that there possibly will be a increase in the property taxes. Do you look at, or will you look at possibly offsetting? Or is the reserve amount as to be at a continual rate in order to run the business? I think I made it too simple, I would be.
No, it's, uh, this, this body has elected a fund balance policy that we maintain a unassigned fund balance of a minimum of fifty percent of our general fund budgets.
I think I got the second part. Will you, will you look if indeed the property taxes go up, to have some kind of offset out of that reserve? Is that possible?
That's not certainly up to the, this body, how it's used to view reserves.
Okay, thank you.
By state law, we're required to have a balanced budget. So if we adopt a vote of a millage rate, then it would not be that, that, that standard. The money's got to suck up and suck up.
I understand, I'm on my, I'm on my board at the HOA. So I understand that reserve piece versus your your balance budget. But just asking that question, is there, is there a way to look at that? Because I am a senior citizen, and we've had to increase our HOA fees, and I don't want to end up the year with a spring match, but okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Good afternoon.
That's been a nice day, I wasn't going to say anything else. I tried to create a whole, I didn't put down. I want to know the percentage, you said twenty, in the paper that I read, it said twenty point three four. Correct, that's how much taxes is going up. Now, does that have anything to do with that cap they're fixing to put on us, the three percent? I personally have a figure that it's out and we're not.
Yeah.
That's a good question, I'm a little bit embarrassed to answer that. Uh, let me say, you can go to slide twenty nine. I, I think the first thing I want to answer to that question is, is the percentage tax increase. And everything we do from advertisement to the, uh, press release is dictated by law. And even how we calculate, uh, the tax increase percentage is determined by law. It's pretty, pretty simple. You take your last, uh, the recommended rollback rate, and what you advertise and you simply do the math, the difference comes to a percentage. Uh, I always give the analogy, you know, if I'm charging you one mill and I go up one mill, I advertise a hundred percent, but yet I'll be charging you two mills. If I'm charging you ten mills, and I go, I deal, I advertise, I'm going up ten percent, but yet I'm charging eleven mills. So when you are low, you certainly get penalized with that portion, so we understand. My question about House Bill five eighty one, um, I actually serve on the State Policy Council. I've actually testified on this bill, so I'm very, very aware of the bill and the implications and how it works and what it doesn't do. Uh, the first thing we have to do, has to pass a referendum, statewide referendum in November. We pass the statewide referendum in November, which we expect it will pass very easily. Um, it will actually put a, well, first of all, in fact, after it passes, local government entities, cities and counties have until March to either stay in or opt out. If you pursue opting out, you have to go through a process that's almost identical to what we're going through with Republican hearings before you declare you're opt out. Again, the committee of officers are going to, we don't think a lot of the tax entities or authorities will opt out of it. And the cap is not a, uh, three percent, I heard a lot of people say that it was three percent. It's not. The cap will be based upon an inflation number that will be determined by the Georgia Department of Revenue. So we don't know if it's going to be three percent, six percent, zero percent, or it'll be a number that's provided to us. What the homestead portion is, let's, let's theoretically say that you have a five hundred thousand dollar house. I'll use a more expensive house to, to get on that one to do an example. And let's say that inflation number was three percent. That means the most your house could jump for that year is fifteen thousand dollars. But if the tax assessor says your property went to five fifty, the difference between five fifty and a five fifteen is your homestead credit. That, that, that's how it would work. If you go to the next law authority, Megan, I actually done some modeling of what, using this year's tax digest, what the impact would be to the city of Newnan's. Because what happens when you have less reassessment value, as I've said a couple of times, that column number two goes down, therefore your rollback rate isn't as much. So for twenty twenty four, the rollback rate was two five nine five. I've estimated three and a half percent inflation rate put into this model, and if that were the case, our rollback rate this year would have been two six eight eight. So I simply done the math, the net difference would have been eight hundred and eighty eight dollars in total with the city levying. So from the city's standpoint, it's somewhat watched. From your standpoint, the homeowner, your free savings, and I think that's why the Georgia Business Association actually supported the bill. Although it overcompensated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
But my name is Tina Nelson. I'm just, I want to understand how the tax assess, I said, how much your property taxes are. I mean, just some, just some.
Yes, we appreciate you being here, but we're not here to. Either to defend or the tax assessor.
Not that, not that, I'll just have a question, but since he brought it up, you know, he's saying like, I know that the five eighty one bill is going to be passed soon, so these meetings that the city of Newnan is having, they have to get these beat, they have to get their polls, and have to get everything in before this, before it's passed. Because after they put the cap on it, you can't go, you can't go anywhere you want to go.
Right, so the tax assessor actually uses real closing of property in your neighborhood, any neighborhood across the city, to value your property. So if your next door neighbor's house closes for X, and your house is valued at X minus, the tax assessors in office picks up X and applies the X plus to your house. I mean, it's like.
I just wanted, I mean, I just wanted, I, I always wondered, I, I wondered whether it was, whether it was beautified or whether it was add on, or whatever.
Well, they do, they also do that. If you come into the city of Newnan and you buy a permit to add a pool to your backyard, and it was worth fifty thousand dollars, a perfect one, they, I don't know the assessed value that they apply to that, they don't, they don't increase it by the entire fifty thousand dollars. But they do look at that permit, and they do come by a house and look and see what's going on. And they understand, I mean, as much as we might not like what we see.
Right.
I have to tell you that they're spot on with a lot of the values that they get. So, but that's those tax assessors, not us.
Yeah.
One thing that y'all, and it's not to help here, but the fact that that assessed value is usually below what you would sell your house for. I know it is in my case, for most people, and you would, you would sell your house for this assessed value people would buy.
I don't agree with that, but.
Well, I'm just telling you, we're talking in assessed values.
But the only reason I brought that up is because he kept bringing the assessed value, that, you know, and I just wanted to know how that they, you know.
That's the way that.
We don't think, especially in our profession and city managers, we don't think that five eighty one. Now, every city's different. Like I said, if you have, if your tax digest is eighty five and ninety percent homesteaded property, yes, then you probably have some concerns that's going to reduce your revenue.
Right.
City of Newnan, we, I personally don't have any concerns that's going to reduce our revenue. I think it's going to help homeowners, so I'm not close to five eighty one. Matter of fact, I'll vote for it.
I think what it is that, um, when, when you put a percentage, people are not really thinking, that's why you guys should come in and explain, like, in the papers, in your articles. Because when they say twenty percent, you know, they're not saying twenty percent, uh, you know. You see why everybody got confused, and everybody's angry, and everybody's upset, because nobody can afford, you know, even the ones that's working out part time. So it just puts a scare in everybody, because if I've got to give you guys nine, ten, eleven thousand dollars a year for my property taxes, then once you get me on the property, I might as well go get me an apartment. You understand? Yeah, I understand what I'm saying, that's all, that's all I'm saying. So you can take it for what it's worth, it, it, it needs to be explained in a different way in the papers or whatever, in the meetings.
We appreciate your comment, it's like. Anyone else? Yes, sir, you'll come forward, say your name.
Hi, I'm still hobby, I live at thirty eight Park Street. I don't know how to, about the property, the millage rate, what if it's not homesteaded? How would they guide you then?
Are, are you asking about currently non-homesteaded or if this passes?
Currently.
Oh, currently, it's, currently it's assessed that your full assessment value, you don't have any homestead now. And when it, if five eighty one passes, it would be assessed at whatever cap it may be reassessed at. That's the simplest way to put it. Currently, though, I think the largest exemption in Quiddity County is the school system senior exemption. I think it's the largest exemption we currently have.
And also, if us citizens are having to cut back on through electricity, everything, why isn't the city? I mean, you know, with employees, you can see employees working somewhere, and they will each have an individual city truck, or parent truck, or whatever. And there might be five working there, and only two is working. The other three are just staying around. I mean, why can't you cut back on stuff like that? The lights, we don't beat those lights and nail them down every weekend. Turn them off, save them on the juices, be called out for lights all night. I mean, if we have to cut up lights back, why can't y'all? That's all I'm saying.
So, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comment. Next. Anyone else? I see no one raising their hand and forward. I'm going to go ahead, are there any other comments from council? Any questions? We have closed this public hearing at this time. The next one will be next Monday.
Seven thirty, then one at six thirty.
And then one at six thirty, that easy, in the same location. Uh, hopefully by then, we'll have our technical difficulties prepared. As Mr. Phillips said earlier, uh, we will have this rolled out in a video posted to our website immediately following the meeting. So we appreciate you being here, appreciate your input. We're going to do what we can to lighten the load as far as expenses and the term, and consider a lower than, as in a two one. We may not get there, but we're going to do our best to try. So, uh, the next item on the agenda this afternoon is an executive session. It will be for legal, so I'm going to ask Mayor Paul Gill, you know, to take us into the motion.